... meeting of the Elmhurst City Council for Monday, December 2nd, 2024. And ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Clerk. Call the roll, please.
Brennan.
Present.
Erby.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Beremus.
Here.
Hill.
Present.
Shenko.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill. Absent. Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Nudira.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Thank you. Item three on our agenda is the public hearing on the tentative annual 2025 budget. There's a public hearing scheduled for the budget of the fiscal year which runs from January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2025. So I will call the public hearing to order. Roll call, so you won't get confused for the aldermen who haven't done this before. This is a meeting within the meeting, so we're calling the roll again. It's not deja vu, all right? So we're calling the roll on the public hearing. City Clerk.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Beremus.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Shenko.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill. Absent. Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Nudira.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
All right, thirteen present, one absent. The purpose of this public hearing is to take public comment concerning the 2025 budget. Clerk, has anyone signed in to make public comment on the budget?
Dan Virgil.
Sir Virgil? Yes, if you'd use the microphone where we do regular public com-- one behind you. Thank you.
Dan Virgil, 598 Fairview. So on this one, I know in public comment, the city typically doesn't respond, but on the notice for this, it said you could ask questions, so I'm not sure if that means it's handled differently. I just have a few questions.
Generally, we don't respond on these. I'm not sure what you saw, but it's public comment as it is for the regular meeting, but this is for the purposes of the budget, but we will take your public comment, of course.
Okay, well, I do have some questions. If any of the aldermen, you know, feel they're worthy enough to follow up on, you know, that's fine, but I'll go ahead and ask my questions. In the budget on page 9-23, it talks about the cost of the vehicle sticker program, and it notes that the admin cost of the program is high. I'm assuming that the costs for this program involve things like the stickers themselves, postage, enforcement, labor of administering the program. Just kind of curious to what those costs are. The next question on page 1-34, where it talks about the debt service tax abatement, it notes that this has been abated for the last eight years and is once again planned to be abated in 2025. It notes that, you know, these costs are going to be covered by other sources rather than coming from the property tax levy. I'm just curious to what those other sources are. And then my final question is in the keb on pages 100 to 110, as well as in the circle back attachment. It talks about the costs of vehicle stickers that are planned to be purchased over the next several years. For these vehicles that are going to be replaced, I'm assuming the old vehicles, you know, have some sort of residual value, and I'm just curious if that is taken into account with the amounts that are listed for the replacement cost, or if those are, you know, handled some other-- in some other fashion. So is the amount that's listed for those vehicles, is that actually a net purchase cost, or is it just the purchase cost and the residual value is handled somewhere else?
All right, although we don't usually respond, we may be able to give you some answers, so it will not be, you know, false advertising that we said you could ask questions. I can answer, I think, the abatement issue. We have abated them for as long as I've been on the council, and other sources are-- all of the other sources we have for city revenue, which include sales tax, permit fees, fines, whatever. The intent is that instead of having that property-- having that cost be in addition to the property tax, we pay for it through all of our other sources, so we make sure we have budget enough funds in other sources.
I understand for that, but I just didn't see any line items in the budget for that.
And there aren't any.
Okay, so it's somewhere-- money that ends up being left over after all the budget items are accounted for?
No, it's-- we budget so that we know that we're going to, you know, abate the property-- that part of the property tax, so we're not going to include it in what we're taking in.
Okay. Still a little confused on how that's accounted for in the budget, though.
I'm not sure, Alderman, Toledo, do you have anything you might add to what I've stated? You don't have to, but if you do--
I mean, I think Director Quill might-- you certainly don't want to get into one and one back and forth in a public hearing, but, you know, the general fund revenues, there's-- takes in lots of revenues, and those revenues, some of those revenues are assigned to. But as far as like the accounting in the budget book, I don't know if that's what Mr. Virgil is asking. I wouldn't comment on that.
Yeah, I may be happy to talk to you offline, but basically, when we plan on abating, it means it's almost like we know we're not going to take it, so we budget with our other revenues, with the cost that we're going to incur. So I don't think it's on any specific line item. In terms of the vehicle, on the keb, I think you're talking about when we're buying new vehicles, do we take into account the amount of money we get on the trade-in, to put it in simple terms?
We do take that into account. It's an estimate at the time that we put the keb together on what the cost of the vehicle might be in a year or two, whatever it is, and then what we expect the trade-in to be.
Okay, so those values in there are the net costs?
Correct.
Purchase cost minus trade-in?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And the last one, I don't think anyone's going to be able to answer in terms of the administrative costs for city sticker lists that's been calculated.
I'm looking at Director Quill. Do we have that right now, or can we get that to Mr. Virgil? If you would please grab the wireless microphone and answer, that would be great.
So the schedule that Mr. Virgil is referring to is in the back of the keb, which goes through our revenue sources and highlights some of the pros and cons of the different revenue sources. So in that particular schedule in the back, it does note that, you know, when you compare vehicle stickers, which we administer in-house with all of our staff collecting those, there's a higher cost to the city for us to process those versus like our income tax, our per capita income tax, where the state manages all of those collections and then sends that to us. So that's kind of what that schedule is talking about. When you compare it to our other revenues, there is a higher administrative cost. I would say that the cost of administering it outside of staff time is probably in the neighborhood of $50,000 of just, you know, the mailings and the printings, but that's, you know, more direct costs, not as much indirect costs.
Yeah, I know there was one line item that was actually discussed in one of the review meetings. It's on page 2-52, where it was $65,000 for commodities, which was-- I'm not sure what that includes as far as the program goes.
There is in the street an administration budget. There is a line item for vehicle licenses, and the majority of that line item is related to the vehicle sticker program, if that's the line that you're referring to.
Yes, yes. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone else sign in for public comment on the budget? All right, is there anyone in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign in for public comment on this public hearing that would like to do so? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Is there a motion to close this public hearing? Alderman Bram with a motion. Alderman Shenko with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And the public hearing is closed. Thank you. Thank you for the comments. We are on now to item four, receipt of written communications from the public. Did we receive any written communications?
We had four of them.
All right, we had four. And is there anyone in the audience that has an additional written communication that they would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. Clerk Malone, has anyone signed in for public forum?
Eric Pulia is the first one.
Mr. Pulia, if you would step to the back microphone. We allow three minutes for public comment to allow for others to make comment and for the city to conduct its business. Please state your name. Address is optional, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Levin. Eric Pulia, I'm the post commander at the Elmhurst American Legion. I'm here to promote two events that will be occurring on Saturday, December 14th. There probably hasn't been this much action at the American Legion since World War II, probably. So the first one is the annual kids' Christmas party. I know some of you came last year. Last year, we opened it up to our local elected officials and police and fire and their children as well. So there will be gifts from Santa, so yes, Santa will be there. Letter writing to Santa, hot chocolate, frozen theme bounce house, balloon artist, and more. So that's at 10:30 to 1:30 on Saturday, December 14th. Now, on that same day, at-- starting at 2:00, so right after the Christmas party, there's an initiative that was undertaken by our Sons of the American Legion Commander, Dave Novotny, who's also a Elmhurst Veterans Commission member. But he organized a watch party for the Army-Navy game. So this is-- and all the proceeds raised at this game will-- or in the viewing of this game, will go towards a memorial monument at York High School dedicated to York graduates who gave their lives in service to our country. So this has been a long initiative by a history teacher there, Justin Riscus, who's great. So their goal is to-- efforts are now underway to raise funds for memorial monument at York High School dedicated to these York graduates, a total of 118, who made the supreme sacrifice from World War I through Iraq and Afghanistan. So, yeah, so all day long on December 14th. I did hear rumor that Alderman Hill is going to dress up as an elf, but maybe there could be a public pressure campaign for that.
No one will be surprised.
And just as an aside, also tomorrow, Illinois State Treasurer Michael Frericks and myself will be at York High School promoting Illinois American Legion Boy State and Girl State. He's an alumni of Boy State, probably our most famous, so just wanted to add that as well. So we might have a lot more mayor proclamations next year, hopefully. And, yeah, but most of you guys have my info, so if anybody wants to come, let me know, and thanks for opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
The next one is Fernando Valdez Nicholson.
And you can adjust the microphone as you need. Just push it up or down.
Hello, my name is Fernando Valdez Nicholson. The following is submitted for the public record. I had a couple letters of support that I submitted earlier. In addition to the more than 1,000 residents on the KeepElmhurstGreenChange.org petition, the 100-plus supporters who have emailed their alderman and our 620 Keep Elmhurst Green Facebook page supporters, we have attached and submitted letters of support from community-based organizations, including the League of Woman Voters, Citizen Climate Lobby, Citizens for Elmhurst Preservation, Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition, and Stop Elmhurst Flooding. From the League of Woman Voters, Elmhurst, quote, "We support management of land as a finite resource versus as a commodity, since land ownership, whether public or private, carries responsibility for stewardship." Citizen Climate Lobby, Elmhurst states, "Any development on this land will not be a significant financial improvement to the city, but destroying the green space would be a significant diminishment for the neighborhood." Citizen for Elmhurst Preservation states, "We strongly believe that the green space should remain undeveloped. Because it is one of the few remaining such spaces, the drainage provided by this open space is important to local homeowners, nearby residents, and the community at large. The bike and pedestrian passage is useful and desirable, and the recreational uses are obvious and extensive. We understand the importance of finances and new development to Elmhurst in the short term, but believe the preservation of green space will provide-- prove the most beneficial in the long term. We ask you to consider preserving and protecting this unique remaining green space as a first step to a broader effort to preserve Elmhurst's fundamental character and quality of life." Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition shares that the green space was a, quote, "gift to the community," and Elmhurst's comprehensive plan calls for preserving natural resources, open spaces, and trees. Quote, "As our elected officials, we've put our trust in you to follow city plans and the desires of the community," end quote. The Stop Elmhurst Flooding Group suggests that development of the green space will, quote, "yet again incrementally and adversely affect the neighborhoods downhill from the area. Stormwater projects completed in the area did not add all the retention needed identified by the Burke Report." Quote, "Care must be taken to stop Elmhurst from incrementally returning to a situation where homes and businesses flood. Please consider this overwhelming support and save the green space in its entirety." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Clerk Malone? You'll find your way. All right.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Nicholson. I'm a resident of Elmhurst, and I've spoken here. Thank you for the opportunity to have this chance to speak to you all. This is a memo to the city council from Keep Elmhurst Green. The Keep Elmhurst Green group has been advocating to save the green space ever since we saw the city discussing selling its real estate assets two years ago. Those assets include 209 North York or City Hall, 125 East First or the police station, 180 West Park or the office building, 104 South Myrtle or the West Water Reservoir, and the green space. In the first DPZ committee meeting that we attended, that I attended, and about 19 others, January 2023, with the advocates present, the mayor said, "We are not in the business of owning and maintaining property." So we have a number of questions resulting from last Monday's finance committee meeting, where for the first time in our two years participating in these committee meetings, DPZ Finance Council meetings, we heard mention from the finance committee of a city-owned property on Addison. In the notes taken by one of our supporters, we learned there's one other asset we could sell off for the green space, or there's also the property on Addison. For those present who, like us, were unfamiliar with this property on Addison, we've learned the city-owned property sits at 113 North to 121 North Addison, which is currently home to the club, Marah Haja Grill, and Caldwell Banker. The Addison property is not listed on the city real estate assets memo. We'd like to know why. We understand that the city real estate assets, all of them are not listed in the memo, but we do not expect the city to consider selling the library or the history museum. But why isn't this property listed as a real estate asset? The property was purchased in 2019 for $2.2 million. Five years later, we're guessing the current value of this property is much higher. A quick visit to the Elmhurst Performing Arts Center website shows the future center has secured property on First Street, directly across from the train station, all the way west to the current corner location of Bread and Butter. So the city owns prime real estate on Addison, and this becomes even more attractive to the builder, or could be a restaurant, a bar, a boutique hotel. In last week's finance committee meeting, the mayor and the finance chair were heavily in favor of raising property taxes to pay for the police station, stating that policing is fundamental to the community, and therefore philosophically, they believe this is where the funding for the police station should come from. What we want to know is, is the property on Addison paid for in part by taxpayer funds? And if so, is the sale of the Addison property not one way that we could use to pay for the police station? Again, prime real estate of which the city of Elmhurst is not in the business of owning or maintaining, which may have been paid for by taxpayer dollars. And now we want to know if this could be used to fund the police station in the future. If the Addison property is not being considered as a way to fund a future police station, why not? And we'd like more information on the city's intention with this property. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
That's all.
All right, that is all of the people who have signed in to make public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment but did not have an opportunity to sign in? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will close public comment, and we will move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais to be made tonight? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Alderman Brennan, did you have something you wanted to do on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to pull agenda item 7.8 back to committee.
7.8, back to committee. It's the chair's prerogative. It will be pulled off the consent agenda. Anyone else? Oh, Alderman Erby.
I think, Mayor, I'm going to pull 7.9, lateral equipment from existing queues inspection unit trade public works.
All right. Alderman Hill? All right, 726. All right, then I will ask for a motion to pass the consent agenda. I'm sorry, city manager?
Happy to do it. Minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on November 18th, 2024. Item 7.2, accounts payable December 2nd, 2024, $3,67,650.62. Item 7.3, 2025 meeting schedule. Item 7.4, referral, city of Elmhurst Vehicle Fleet Funding Policy Review. 7.5, report, case 24P18, Sandberg Middle School Conditional Use Permit for Planned Unit Development, 345 East St. Charles Road. 7.6, report, case ZBA08, Thornton's Pylon Sign Variation, 476 North York. Item 7.7, a report, Metropolitan Family Services MOU report. Item 7.10, report, Park Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Balancing Change Order. Item 7.11, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for the property commonly known as 501 West Lake Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. Item 7.12, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for a planned unit development with site development allowances and approving a plat of consolidation for the construction of an addition to and a parking lot for the school located at the property commonly known as 980 and 994 South Riverside Drive, Elmhurst, Illinois, Salt Creek Primary School. Item 7.13, an ordinance amending section 7.204 entitled Local Capital Investment Recovery Charge of Article 4 entitled Rates and Charges of Chapter 7 entitled Water and Sewers of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.14, an ordinance to amend section 41.04 entitled Schedule of Fees of Chapter 41 entitled Motor Vehicle Licenses of the Municipal Code of the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.15, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between the Spring Road Business Association and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook County, Illinois. 7.16, an ordinance waiving bid accepting the proposal of Stewart Spreading Inc. and authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for the maintenance and cleaning of digester III at the City of Elmhurst Water Reclamation Facility. Item 7.17, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024, of the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 7.18, an ordinance abating the tax levy for the year 2024 for the payment of principal and interest accruing upon an issue of $9,375,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2014B, of the City of Elmhurst dated November 4, 2014. Item 7.19, an ordinance abating the tax levy for the year 2024 for the payment of principal and interest accruing upon an issue of $16 million of general obligation bonds of the City of Elmhurst dated July 1, 2015. Item 7.2, an ordinance abating the tax levy for the year 2024 for the payment of principal and interest accruing upon the issue of $25 million of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2016, of the City of Elmhurst dated June 22, 2016. Item 7.21, an ordinance abating the tax levy for the year 2024 for the payment of principal and interest accruing upon an issue of $6,770,000 in general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2017A, of the City of Elmhurst dated June 20, 2017. Item 7.22, an ordinance abating the tax levy for the year 2024 for the payment of principal and interest accruing upon an issue of $9,615,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2017B, of the City of Elmhurst dated August 1, 2017. Item 7.23, an ordinance abating the tax levy for the year 2024 for the payment of principal and interest accruing upon an issue of $9,715,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2018, of the City of Elmhurst dated December 5, 2018. Item 7.24, an ordinance abating the tax levy for the year 2024 for the payment of principal and interest accruing upon an issue of $9,925,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2019, of the City of Elmhurst dated December 30, 2019. Item 7.25, an ordinance abating the tax levy for the year 2024 for the payment of principal and interest accruing upon an issue of $9,570,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2021, of the City of Elmhurst dated April 29, 2021. Item 7.27, a resolution accepting the proposal of Marsh-- that's been pulled. 7.27, a resolution accepting the proposal of Marsh McLennan Agency for Professional Insurance Brokerage Services to acquire insurance coverage for the City of Elmhurst. Item 7.28, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional engineering services agreement between the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, and Baxter and Woodman, Inc., for the 2025 Computer Management Maintenance Software Assistance Project.
All right, so I would now ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 7.8, 7.9, and 7.26. Alderman Nardini with a motion. Alderman Brennan with a second. Roll call, please.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Beremus.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Nudira.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The consent agenda passes. We're on to 7.9. Clerk Malone, please read the report.
Report, lateral equipment from existing queues inspection unit traded.
Yeah, the recommended action is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Building Committee. The city accept the proposal from EJ Equipment of Mantino, Illinois, for the removal of sewer lateral equipment from the city's existing queues, closed circuit TV inspection unit, in return for a new queues CPR slash zero OZSIIIS transporter camera unit, and that the city attorney be authorized to draft a resolution approving the contract. Signed, Emily Bastido, Chair. Alderman Brian Cahill, Vice Chair. Alderman Michael Bram and Alderman Karen Shenko.
Thank you. May I have a motion to put-- to approve item 7.9? Alderman Bastido with a motion. Alderman Bram with a second. Alderman Bastido?
I'd defer to Alderman Erby, who pulled this.
Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor, in indulgence of the chair. I have no problem with the logistics of what's happening with the report. It's basically the report is missing some key information for the public. When you swap an item, you can't swap an item on your accounting books. You have to make an entry to remove the item that's being traded in, or in this case, swapped, and then you bring the new item in at the fair market value or whatever your best accounting practice is for that item. So I would request that we correct this report so that it has the proper book value of the asset being retired, so we know, A, what it is exactly, what account number it's from, and then showing, if it's the same account number, what the new item cost, and if there's a difference, what would that number be? In this case, if it appears none, is it's a like-for-like value swap? But we need to disclose exactly what the book values are and the account numbers, and make sure the public--
to add, uh, the costs and line item for the new equipment and the value and line item of the replaced equipment. Is that essentially it?
That was, that's perfect, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, is there a second on that motion? All right, the motion dies for lack of second. Any other discussion?
God.
All right.
That's okay. That's fine.
All right, roll call on, on 7.9.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
I believe that would be a no.
Deuter.
Right, I'm sorry. If it's not clear, the motion failed, so we're on the main report. So, is your, you're voting no on the main, on the report itself?
Correct.
All right, very good.
Deuter.
Aye.
Bribas.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Shaco.
Aye.
Judson.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Nudira.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, and zero absent.
All right. Uh, that was thirteen ayes, uh, sorry, twelve ayes, one nay, and zero absent. Correct.
Correct.
All right, and so the report passes. 7.26, City Manager.
Thank you. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois, as follows. The annual budget for the City of Elmhurst for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025, and the ending on December 31, 2025, which is attached here to and made a part hereof as Exhibit A, is hereby approved pursuant to the requirements of Section 3.19 of the Elmhurst Municipal Code.
All right, you can have a motion to pass 7.26.
Alderman Jensen with the motion. Alderman Nudira with the second. Um, I guess it's the budget. Does the Chair want to offer anything, or? All right.
No, I don't, I mean, this was a, a group effort. Um, this budget represents the will of the entire City Council. Thank you.
All right, uh, Alderman Hill, you pulled it? All right, did you want to comment, or?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, the reason I pulled this item, and I feel bad that this item is pulled so late in the process, but I feel like it needs some reflection and some discussion, which I did engage in prior to today. Um, but it specifically relates to something that was brought back in a circle back memo, um, from the last committee of the whole meeting. It's on page 222 of the budget. Uh, it is the public information line item 530295, which has 225,000 budgeted for 2025.
Sorry, one more time the page number?
Sorry, 2-22.
2-22. All right, thank you.
And, um, in the circle back memo, myself and I believe, actually, I believe it was Alderman Nardini that asked for a list of budgeted items for this account line, and I had asked at the same time some information about why costs in that line are increasing. We got the circle back memo, which include, included the breakdown and some of the explanation, and I asked some questions about it, but I took longer than I should have to think about it and reflect on it. But to give a little bit of context, and maybe as a little bit of public information, hopefully I get this right, but to get things added to the budget as an Alderman requires multiple steps, which would involve a referral, then a referral pass goes to committee and generates a report and then goes to council, and if approved, that would go on and be reflected in the budget. And for staff to get items added to the budget requires that staff add it to the budget. Uh, it is discussed during the, of course, within staff, but then when it's added to the budget, it's presented during the budget review process to the Alderman where they hear that and then approve the budget, and then it can move on to, through that process, committee and council for approval. But we have already ratified it to some degree by approving it in the budget. So that's why I feel like this needs to be addressed now, because what I heard is the explanation for the social media marketing, uh, I'm sorry, the paid, excuse me, paid media influencer, social media influencer campaign for Explore Elmhurst is at $60,000 as part of that breakdown for the public information line. And, you know, when I think about this, I, since this is our opportunity to review this, what staff puts on the budget, I don't feel like what I've heard supports or justifies this amount for what is basically a proof of concept. And I think this is something where we can start with a smaller amount, um, and if it's something that works or needs additional funding, that's something we can do later on, either falling under the City Manager's signing authority, or that's something that can go through council and committee approval. Um, and I know this is small potatoes, like this is a small thing coming in late, but I feel like it's important to point out something when it occurs to us before the budget is passed, because after it's passed, it's too late, and I, I have a problem with this amount. I feel like proof of concepts should be scaled appropriately, and I should have said something at the time we were discussing it, but on reflection, I'm not okay with it. I'd like to make a motion that, that, um, line 530295 be, uh, adjusted by removing 40,000 from that public information line. I don't know how that 40,000 could be put specifically towards a non-light item within that budget, which is the social media influencer campaign for, for Explore Elmhurst, but that's my intent, where that 40,000 would be taken out of. I think that 20,000 for a proof of concept here is an appropriate amount, and it's something that's scalable. If we have success with this, success with it this year, we can move on to something bigger. And again, this is our opportunity to review it. I feel like this is the same conversation I'd be having if a referral came to committee and we were discussing it and talking about what's an appropriate budget amount or amount to start with, I should say, uh, with the particular untried concept, uh, in the absence of an RFP or something like that. Salute. So, again, I'll restate my motion. I, and I, if I'm doing this wrong, City Manager and Mayor, please correct me. I'll wear an elf costume for a year, but, um, I am motioning that we support a, motioning that we adjust line 530295 by 40,000 in the budget.
All right, so there, your motion is to decrease, you're moving to decrease line 530295 by 40,000.
Correct.
Your intent to take it out of this page, or just to take it out of the budget? In other words, are you reallocating within the budget, or are you taking it?
I don't have an intent to reallocate it this time. Um, I personally simply think it could be removed from this.
So we have a motion to decrease 530295 by 40,000. Second by Alderman Bram. Uh, discussion on the motion. Alderman, Deuter.
Can I just ask a, a clarifying question about what's before us tonight? Um, it looks like what's included in the ordinance is a much broader set of categories. Is that actual line that Alderman Hill is referring to? Is it in, though it is in the ordinance?
You know, let me find it, because, um, I'm not sure I'm in the right doc.
Yeah, I just had it. On, on the attachment to the budget ordinance, it would be page four of 35, if you're following on Board Docs, and it would be, uh, line item 1101013, and then 530295.
Okay. Can I ask a follow-up question, Mayor?
Just one more time on, which, uh?
110.
Mm-hmm.
10.
What page? Page four.
One.
All right, 110.
101.
13.
530295 dash 530295. On of 260 right now.
All right, thank you. All right, so if you're on Board Docs and looking at the budget document, it's on page four, uh, and it's under, it's, uh, 110013.
103. 1101013.
13. And it has a, uh, and a dash 530295. It says public information, and the total is 260. So the motion would be to remove, to reduce that 260 by 40,000 to 220,000. All right, Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. The expense of 60,000, is it, would it be staff's intention that they would bring a proposal to a committee for that, for an expense to actually be made? So this is, this is the plan, this is the spending document, but would the, a committee have an opportunity to review the actual proposal to spend?
Yeah, so, again, because there was some confusion last time, this is not to hire or contract for a media influencer. It's if something came about, like I think the example that we had before was where a TV station came to town and said, "We want to feature your town," and it costs 15,000 for us to do that. That proposal then would have to go, I think, actually in front of Public Affairs and Safety, and they would review it, and it would be approved or not approved. This is putting it in the budget, is not approving the expenditure for those programs.
Um, yes, and, I mean, clearly there are some programs that are within the authority, the spending authority of the City Manager, um, and we had broken out in the circle back memo where those costs are. So I, I think this was mischaracterized a little bit as 60,000 just for this program, which is not the case. It was all of social media, um, uh, marketing, is what I would call it. So perhaps we, uh, I think, uh, our Communications Director Schreff mentioned that because it was something new that we would try, and it was kind of a missed opportunity last year for us, because we didn't have anything budgeted for it, which is why she brought it up during that, so that the council was aware of it. We are more than happy to go to committee and talk about it if that's what the council wants us to do, to develop the program, or not develop the program.
Thank you. That's very helpful to hear. Thanks.
All right, additional discussion? Alderman Veramus.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, because I don't have last year's budget in front of us, that line item, oh, it's on here. Um, for social media last year specifically, what did we allocate for that?
Uh.
I mean, I see the total.
Estimated is 255.
It's actually gone down this year. Public information.
I'm, I'm looking at Director Coyle to see if she can come up with that accurate number specific to that line item.
I guess I'm asking because we're saying 60,000, but that's not to just hire a social media influencer. You're saying that 60,000 is for all social media marketing.
That's correct.
And I just wanted to know what that was last year.
All right, Director Coyle.
So I don't have specific dollar amounts. I know that that line item was, um, under budget, um, and is projected to be under budget this year, but, um, Director Schreff did give me some examples that we use these dollars for this year, um, this, this particular set of, of money, and, um, this year we used it for the DuPage, um, Convention and Visitors Bureau Visitors Guide advertisement, so that was a way that we use these funds, and then the Chamber Directory ads that, that feature Explore Elmhurst, um, were some ways we used this funding. So this year there was no, as, as Manager Gorowski said, there was no, um, you know, kind of more of the paid media advertising, but the, that line item was used for, um, those particular items this year.
All right, is that answer your question, Alderman Veramus?
I guess I'm, I'm asking, the 60,000 that we have this year, was it 60,000 last year? And how much more did we add because we may need a influencer, so to speak?
That's the wrong question. I'm not sure, I mean, I'm looking at the line, and it was budgeted, I can't, it's not broken down, but it was 255.
And now it's 225.
And it'll be 225 this year. Am I, is that correct, Director Coyle? All right.
The total went down. Correct.
Alderman Hill and Alderman Bram. Did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, I'd like to say that in the circle back memo, there is a separate amount of 10,000 broke, broken out for social media marketing.
60,000.
Not, not part of the 60,000. That's separate.
All right.
So social media marketing was separate from that, and as I'm aware of the information I was given, we did not budget funds for, uh, influencer campaign last year.
Last year was 255.
All right, Alderman Bram.
Alderman Hill stole every one of my comments, yes. So, it was just stated that the 60,000 is all encompassing for social media, but according to the memo from the circle backs, as Alderman Hill just stated, that's a different line item for 10,000. From the discussions that we had, it was stated, at least clearly to me, that the 60,000 was new. I think, um, Director Coyle made the statement of, you know, missed opportunities, uh, last year, um, and therefore, my understanding is that this 60,000 is particularly for, as stated in the circle back men, uh, memo, paid media slash influencer campaign for Explore Elmhurst, uh, marketing campaign. So the 10,000 is separate for social media marketing.
Um, Director Coyle, is that paid media also, is that just for, um, social influencer kind of things, or is that other kinds of media?
So my understanding in, in talking with Director Schreff was that the 60,000 was inclusive of any paid media. So it may be, um, what everyone would consider to be more of an influencer. It may be where, um, WGN News comes and would like to feature our town. It may be a paid advertisement. It was more of paid media, not necessarily just an influencer campaign. That was what she had relayed. That was one of the examples that was given, but that was what she had relayed on to me.
So in the circle back memo, it says paid media slash influencer campaign for Explore Elmhurst, uh, marketing campaign. So the 10,000 is separate for social media marketing. Um, Director Coyle, is that paid media also, is that just for, um, social influencer kind of things, or is that other kinds of media?
So my understanding in, in talking with Director Schreff was that the 60,000 was inclusive of any paid media. So it may be, um, what everyone would consider to be more of an influencer. It may be where, um, WGN News comes and would like to feature our town. It may be a paid advertisement. It was more of paid media, not necessarily just an influencer campaign. That was what she had relayed. That was one of the examples that was given, but that was what she had relayed on to me.
So in the circle back memo, it says paid media slash influencer campaign for Explore Elmhurst, but I, whatever the director said is what I would know. Follow up, Alderman Bram. Now, Alderman Nardini?
Uh, I just, my recollection is consistent with Alderman Bram and Director Coyle, that it was, uh, a placeholder for, uh, and as of yet unused social media influencer and also paid media. So, uh, that is consistent with what Alderman Bram and Director Coyle said.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so looking at this, I, I appreciate the, the dialogue on this. Uh, at an aggregate, you know, we're looking at 225 for, for this line item. Uh, last, last year it was at 255. So although there, there is some uncertainty on how the 60,000 might be used, I, I think having it in our, our budget is, doesn't put outside, put us outside the last year's, you know, budget marker. Um, and I do think it's something that, i-if the council would like this to, to get hashed out at, at committee to where we, we, we get some, you know, better details around this, I'm, I'm happy to, to do that. But, you know, for the purpose of approving a budget, um, I, I think taking dollars out that would put us below last year's number would, would potentially put us in a worse position than last year. So, I support the 60,000. I, I do, I would like to, to see more of what this new world looks like, but, but it's just that. I, I think our world is changing, and social media is a big part of it. And anytime, I always thought that if we landed on WGN or ABC, I, I thought they just came out and were doing it out of the kindness of their hearts. And sometimes they do, sometimes, I guess, they don't. So, so I'd rather have Elmhurst in a position where we can take advantage of an opportunity to showcase our beautiful town. Thank you.
All right, Alderman Jensen, then Alderman Nardini.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I see both sides of this. If this truly was 60,000 for a proof of concept for an influencer campaign, I mean, that seems too large. If it's partially influencer, partially paid media, I'm more amenable to that. Um, ultimately, you know, we don't have a specific use for these funds, so- Ultimately, you know, we don't have a specific use for these funds, so I think I would definitely want to see it go through committee before spending even something that's well under city manager's spending authority, because, you know, I, I don't want to approve sixty thousand, thousand dollars for some random influencers, which I don't understand, to be honest, the concept of influencers. I also understand media's changing, so you have to go where people are. But, you know, that's a big line item for a proof of concept. I don't really know where I'm gonna, I still need process this and hear the rest of the discussion, but, you know, I, if the sixty thousand dollars stayed in there, I definitely want to see it come to committee for every part of that, so we can understand better what it's going to be used for, because it's a new idea.
Alderman Nardini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for point of clarity, the sixty thousand dollars number that we're talking about is the line item that was for paid media influencer campaign for Explore Elmhurst. What Alderman Hill is proposing to amend is a forty thousand dollar change. Just for clarification here, he is proposing, unless I'm mistaken, a reduction of forty thousand dollars. The sixty thousand dollars is something we talked about in the last, uh, committee of the whole, but what is on the table is a forty thousand dollar reduction.
One moment. It says it was two-sixty, but it's really taking the two-twenty-five. All right, this is not, because I'm hearing a couple of different concepts. Alderman Jensen saying he doesn't want to spend any money of this line item, but the line item is not all, as I understand it, and Director Coyle, if you want to correct, but it's not all what was talked about as the, for social media influencer. So, there is, there are monies that we would spend. I think what Alderman Brennan was saying is if it's social media influencer, he'd want that to go through the committee, but not the entire line item, because there are other things we do on a day-to-day basis from that line item. Alderman Bastido.
Okay, well, then this is very unclear, because Alderman Nardini just said that the sixty thousand dollars is for the influencer line item. Whatever bigger category it's part of, that went from two-twenty, two-fifty down to two-twenty-five. But aren't we just talking about sixty thousand dollars for this specific purpose? I'm less clear now than I was when this meeting started.
Thank you. So, as Alderman Bastido was saying, and I'm looking at the memo, the circle back memo, item twenty-two, which had the breakout of all of our communications and marketing. And there's one item that's paid media influencer campaign for Explore Elmhurst, which includes more than just an influencer, it could be Facebook, Boos, I think that's the term, and things like that. But, as I'm understanding it from talking to Alderman Hill earlier today, it would be very specific to a paid influencer of some sort in next year's budget.
That was zero last year and is sixty thousand this year?
To ask Alderman, Director Coyle.
I just wanted to, I did get one piece of information that Alderman Veremas had asked, which is pertinent to the conversation. So, last year in 2024, there was fifty-five thousand dollars budgeted for social media communications campaigns. So, that was the part of that component that was, that was budgeted in 2024, including in that amount.
So, is this now five thousand dollars more for the same thing?
That, that was the amount included in that line item for last year, was fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars for social media communications campaigns last year.
You're saying fifty-five thousand?
Correct.
And so, it's five thousand more this year?
Correct.
Alderman Nardini?
To be fair, this year, there is a ten thousand social media marketing and a sixty thousand paid media slash influencer campaign. So, while the number last year is fifty-five for social, whatever the specific language that Director Coyle just read is fifty-five thousand, that does not necessarily fit neatly into this year's budget categories. So, I politely disagree with the fifty-five thousand, sixty thousand dollar distinction. There are a couple, sort of, more varied categories this year.
This is why these are kind of hard to do, like, on the dais, you know, when we're passing the budget, as opposed to the meetings we had before. But Alderman Tolu.
Just to complicate things, I believe that there is a error in the ordinance as written in this budget line item. It has been added wrong or is different than what we reviewed in the draft budget. So, on page four of thirty-five, on the ordinance budget that's posted under this line item, five-three-oh-two-nine-five, is listed as two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. That same line item in the budget that we've been reviewing over the past couple of weeks, that same line item on page one-oh-six, five-three-oh-two-nine-five, public information is listed as two-twenty-five.
Carryover. That's additional, the carryover is thirty-five thousand from last year, and that's where you get from two-twenty-five to two-sixty.
Director Coyle is shaking her head in agreement. That is correct.
All right.
Thank you. So, that's good. And unless, unless the mayor would indulge me to have Director Coyle just let us know what the carryover amount was. I think it's listed in the memo, but she's got the microphone.
Yes. So, the carryover is fifteen thousand dollars for the visitors and welcomes, welcome guide, and then twenty thousand dollars for the Public Arts Commission.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not sure where we are exactly, but additional discussion? Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. I support leaving this in. I appreciate that staff needs some flexibility, and I appreciate Chair Brendan's offer to have the social media spending come to committee. I think that's a nice way to proceed, and I support it.
All right. Alderman Bastido?
But the social media spending is just ten thousand dollars this year, right? So, do you mean the social media spending and the sixty thousand dollars?
I'd say whatever, I mean, I'd, I'd look to the city manager to narrow that down in a way that's practical for staff to implement, but I would say the social media spending in general is a reasonable thing to come to committee for review and approval.
Certainly, we can do that. That's what the committee would like.
Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm a little confused how we debate budget items if they have to go to committee every time, they need further discussion, because I don't know how to narrow down on this. What we have is this public information line that has tripled since, well, let me give you some numbers. Twenty-twenty-one, it was seventy thousand. Twenty-twenty-two, it was eighty thousand. Twenty-twenty-three, it was two-hundred-and-one thousand. Now, part of that was ostensibly for Explore Elmhurst. Now, we're still looking at two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty with the carryover. So, we have a budget that has increased significantly. Now, I'm proposing that we remove forty thousand, not even the entire amount, from us, from a proof of concept idea that is mingled with other items. And if that has to go to committee to be figured out, I would submit that it should start at committee. Instead of going through and approving it here, when we're unclear what we're approving, it's, it's confusing as to what we're actually dealing with here. Why do we have to approve an amount and create a placeholder for it when we're not even clear what we're creating a placeholder for? So, I think it's inadequately explained. And sure, it can go to committee and be discussed there, but I don't think it meets the litmus test for being on the budget if we can't explain it and deal with it here. So, I still agree that a motion to reduce it by forty thousand would be an appropriate way to deal with those costs, and I'm dealing with an area that specifically wasn't called out in last year's budget, but now is new.
Alderman Tolu?
Thank you. I would support sending kind of this to committee. I don't support reducing the budget by forty thousand dollars primarily because, well, for a number of reasons, but the most high-level reason is that it's already a reduction in the budget overall, and then taking another forty thousand dollars away and not knowing where staff would cut those dollars from makes me concerned. We don't really have clarity on what the total bucket is being used for. So, I think it's better to get the details, get the real information from staff, have three members of the council review it in detail in the committee process, and move from there. Thank you.
Other discussion? Alderman Bastido?
Well, I just wish before I voted on it, it was clear if last year's budget was fifty-five thousand dollars, and then this year's is seventy, because it's the sixty-plus, the social media ten. I mean, because that's a lot different than this, you know, going from zero to sixty thousand dollars for something that I'm sorry, but I don't think staff has done a very good job of explaining, even though it was asked during the budget process. So, that's why I wish we could have those answers tonight. That's just my thoughts.
Additional discussion? Alderman Bram?
I agree with Alderman Hill. You know, some Aldermen have asked in the past on where we're going to find the money if we wanted to add any other type of programs or services to the budget. We've also said in the past of, if it's important enough, we'll find those dollars. Those are two statements that happened at the last committee, the whole meeting regarding the budget. I feel the same way about this. It's not clear. We can just even see the discussion here tonight, that it doesn't seem like anybody is a hundred percent certain on, on what is going on with this line item, and, and how to define it from one year to the next, and what the cost has been from one year to the next. Overall, communications and marketing, the budget total is one-point-one million dollars. So, asking to cut, to solidify what this program should or could do, and what the return on investment would, would be, and not even cutting the full sixty thousand, I think is an appropriate amendment. And it's, it's only making, the amendment is only to request forty thousand dollars out of that sixty thousand. We've already discussed, city manager has the approval of up to, up to and including, I think, fifty thousand.
Correct.
So, if it's absolutely needed, this, I guess, representative of removing forty thousand dollars isn't going to do anything. But I think it does, what it does speak to is to make sure that everybody is clear on what the budget is from one year to the next, especially on something that is, as Alderman Hill has stated, a pilot program. So, I fully support the amendment as made.
City manager, do you want to comment on the, the authority or anything else?
Thank you, Mayor. So, listening to the conversation, I mean, I, I understand that the council's looking for more detail on what we're working on. In the Communications Division, we have two and a half staff members, which is what they do, right? Every day, all day, that's what they do. And so, when Director Schreff comes to myself and the assistant manager and says, "I think we can do this better, and here's how, and here's the dollar amount that we think we'll need for it," we talk about it. And not all the programs that they bring to us get put in the budget. But in this case, understanding that there was a missed opportunity last year, and also understanding that within our strategic plan, communications and economic development, which is part of this, is one of the core functions that we need to perform, we feel that this is appropriate in the budget and certainly warranted. We are more than happy to come to the committee to explain every program that is within this budget. I apologize that I can't do that tonight, because I, that is not my strong suit on social media. So, to try to do that tonight, I'm sure our staff members in the audience would all cringe. But it's, it's varied, it's all well-thought-out by the communication staff, and so I just want the council to know that, that we're not just lump summing some dollars into the budget with a maybe this or maybe that. But as, as was pointed out during our process, not all of our dollars get spent, because sometimes we think we're going to do something, but then that opportunity maybe doesn't come about. And so, there's, there are dollars in there. But not knowing that that's going to happen, we, we plug in those numbers anticipating that we're going to use that. So, however the council wants to give us direction on that, we're happy to do it, Mayor.
All right, I only want to, the city manager's authority is fifty thousand, but if the money is taken out, and you, it's not that he can say, "I'm going to spend it," because the money is not part of the budget, so there are not funds available for expenditure. Otherwise, well, if it's not in the budget, I don't have to explain further. All right. Yes?
I will follow up on that, Mr. Mayor. We had conversations about that very item when we were talking about the landscape medians and, and adding electrical, on why we wouldn't add it. So, my understanding of what you just said is opposite to the conversation we had about a week ago.
Well, we budget a total amount of money, and if money in one category isn't used fully, and we can, you know, we, when you get to a budget, and I think we're talking about a hundred-and-fifty-five million dollar budget, of which this is forty thousand. Or if it was for the safety item, North on York, if we needed to find fifty thousand, there, there are funds that may not be spent in other categories that might be used. When you cut the money from the budget, it's not going to another category, it's just being cut from the budget. So, the funds aren't in the, the budget goes down by forty thousand, it's not being reallocated. I don't know if that makes a grain, a great impact on a hundred-and-fifty-five million, but we're spending a lot of time talking about it, so I just wanted to throw in that point. Someone had a comment, was Alderman Tolu, Alderman Jensen?
So, if it was reduced by forty thousand dollars, we're still raising that revenue, so there's just forty thousand dollars that's not being put in the line item somewhere. Is that accurate?
Correct.
What committee would this go to? Public Affairs and Safety?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready. We're do, ready for roll call. So, just to make sure we're clear, the motion, as I understand it, is to reduce one-one-oh-one-oh-one-three-dash-five-three-oh-two-nine-five by forty thousand dollars from, I guess it'd be from two-sixty to two-twenty.
Correct.
All right, that's the motion. We're not voting on the budget right now, we're voting on this motion. With that, any, everyone clear? All right. Clark Malone, call the roll on the motion.
Brennan?
No.
Herbie?
Herbie?
Yep.
Yes.
Deuter?
No.
Veremas?
No.
Hill?
Yes.
Chenko?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Bram?
Yes.
Tolu?
No.
Park?
No.
Udira?
No.
Bastido?
Yes.
Hrdidi?
Yes.
Seven, yes, is six, no.
Seven?
Seven yea. Six nay. The ayes have it.
And it's the rule of seven?
It can't be on this amendment.
Yeah. And for, I will vote no.
Can you explain it?
Can I explain it?
It was...
My vote?
No.
Oh.
The rule of seven, she's asking.
Thank you. Ask, can you explain the rule of seven?
Well, to pass an ordinance, we need eight. But this isn't an ordinance, this is an amendment. So...
Well, isn't the rule of seven that when you have a, is it only on an ordinance?
It's on an ordinance.
Oh, well, then I...
An expenditure of funds, you have to have eight. This only has seven, but it's not an ordinance, it's not an expenditure of funds.
So, then I would not vote.
No, you wouldn't, you would not need...
Cancel my vote. All right. So, we have seven ayes, six nays, the motion passes. All right. We're on to the main budget, which is, incorporates the motion. Discussion on the budget. Alderman Tolu?
I'll just say that, you know, I appreciated all of our staff and the time that our staff members put into pulling together the budget, all of the late hours at city council chambers for folks, both the council members and staff members that are not always doing that, and appreciated all the good discussion by the council. I think we have a nice budget here. We're fulfilling one of our primary obligations as a city council of passing a balanced budget on behalf of the residents of Elmhurst.
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Okay, help me out with that. Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Udira?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
The 7.26 is adopted. Excuse me, one second.
This isn't working.
We're good? 7.26 passes. All right. I just would like to also thank everyone for their hard work on the budget. People took a careful look at it this year. I would also like to mention that it's not unusual, in fact, it's most common practice for staff to develop a budget to be presented. If you go to the United States Congress, or the General Assembly, or any municipality, staff prepares the budget. It's not developed, you know, by committee. Our job is to carefully review it, which is what we've done this year. So everything has worked as it should. So thank you all for that. Item eight, reports and recommendations of elected officials. Before me is a sign. This is something we've developed as a campaign to highlight the concern that has been expressed many times about slowing down on our, particularly our residential streets. It's something that was of concern to me when I ran. I know that we talked about it in our planning sessions, when we talked about the priorities. It's a public safety priority. And then we've also talked about in terms of our area plans, when people have come out and expressed concern, and it's been highlighted that a lot of times, it's our own residents are, we are the ones who are speeding around town. So if anyone wants one of these signs to display in your yard, not on the public parkway, they're available at the police department, and I hope it will heighten awareness of what this public safety concern is in our city. I'd like to congratulate the York High School football team for once again getting down to a cold second-place finish down in Bloomington, Illinois. It's a remarkable accomplishment. Next year. That's my report, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a, an open house on the future funding of our public transportation system in DuPage County coming up at the Carroll Stream Village Hall. That's Wednesday, December 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Be an opportunity to comment and ask questions. This has to do with the pending funding deficit for all public transportation throughout the area, but this is particular to DuPage County. And the free, the last free leaf pickup of the year is this week with your regular garbage pickups, so please get all those out there. And the reason, I want to explain the reason that it's this week, it's so hard for us to predict when the leaves are going to fall, of course, but at a certain time, the landfills close for organic material to be delivered. And so next week is that week, and so that's why we schedule it as late as possible before it can be delivered there. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. I do want to add, the holly trolley has started every Saturday from noon to midnight, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank all those, including Dan Givens, who worked so hard on another successful turkey trot, a tradition here in Elmhurst. Other reports or recommendations from city officials? All right. Any other business to be brought before the council? Alderman Nardini?
I'm sure that this is an inappropriate moment to mention, because it's not other business, but I want to add on to your York Duke comment. There was a cold team of state championship game, York Dukes, who went down and kicked some butt. Bruno Mazel, Hunter Stepanek, Jack War, Nathan Nicholson, they had an amazing season. They froze their butts off in the state finals. They came up short to a juggernaut of a team, but look out, Illinois, York is a, is a dangerous team to deal with.
I detect an alum speaking there. All right. Thank you, Alderman Nardini. All right. If there's no other business, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Toledo. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.